Okay, is everyone present? I see it's 6:30.
It looks like everybody is here. Tammy? Yes, everybody's here. There she is, I see you Tammy, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, everybody's here.
Okay. So I will go ahead and call the Planning Commission meeting for July 23 in order. I will go ahead and before doing your part of my part, we'll do the Pledge Allegiance roll call and then we'll talk about public comments and Zoom process. So. All right, I'll go ahead and lead it off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, all right, thank you for that. Ms. Jones, can we have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Present.
Commissioner Gao.
Present.
Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Vice Chair Malari.
Present.
Chair Navarro.
Present.
At this time, Chair Navarro, would you mind if I read some opening statements?
Please do, yes.
Thank you for joining us for the July 22, 2021 City of American Canyon Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being held entirely virtually in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The format tonight will be similar to that of an in-prison planning commission meeting. In addition to the Zoom platform, the meeting is being broadcast on cable TV channel 28, on YouTube, and streamed live on the city's website. You will see members of the planning commission on your screen along with members of city staff. All members of the public will participate unless and only. Public comment is invited for non-agenda items during the public forum session. I at the beginning of the meeting and on each agenda item. When the item you wish to speak on is called, please follow these steps to make your comment. When the chairman calls a particular item and you wish to speak on the item, click on the raise hand button if joined by computer. Joined by phone dial star nine to raise your hand. When it is your turn, I will announce your name and invite you to speak. You may see a message saying host would like me to, would like you to unmute yourself. If you get this message, click unmute yourself and begin speaking. To unmute yourself by phone dial star six and begin speak. Video will not be turned on, only audio. You have up to three minutes to make your comments to the planning commission. At the end of your three minutes, I will ask you to conclude your comments quickly and I will mute your audio once you're done. Please only press star nine to raise your hand for the items you wish to speak on. Those raised hands will be cleared at the end of each item. The agenda for this meeting is available on the city's website. As a standard practice, community members are allowed to comment one time on each agenda item. All votes for tonight's meeting will be taken by roll call. And we ask for your patience and understanding when there are technical difficulties. This concludes my opening remarks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones. Now I'll speak to public comment. This is a time for the members of the public may comment on any item not appearing in the agenda. Under state law matters presented under this section cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the appropriate time. It's very important to speak directly into the microphone or a computer and limit your time comments to three minutes or less. Okay, with that, are there any agenda changes?
Thank you, Chair Navarro, we have no agenda changes for you tonight.
Okay, thank you. So let's move then to the consent calendar.
Actually, Chair Navarro, we should probably call for public comment on non-agendized items first.
Okay. Okay, are there any, is there any public comment?
At this time, if you have public comment for non-agendized items, please raise your hand. There are no hands raised, Chair Navarro.
Okay, so we will close public comment. And there are no agenda changes, so we can move to the consent calendar with the minutes approval. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes. Approve the consent calendar in whole, which consists of the minutes of the June 24, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Gao.
Aye.
Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Vice Chair Malari.
Aye.
Chair Navarro.
Aye. Okay, all right, with that, we can get to the next item in our public hearings. Administrative Citation Appeal for Indoor Cannabis Cultivation at 51 Prelow Drive.
Thank you, Chair Navarro and Planning Commission, Brent Cooper, Community Development Director. And this item tonight is the first citation from the new cultivation ordinance that was adopted by the city council in the fall of 2020. And I have a brief presentation for you to kind of run through the different issues that comes with this application or other this citation. So hopefully you can see the main screen there.
Yes.
So a brief background, not too long ago in May of this year, the police responded to a home invasion at 51 Polaria Drive in the La Vinaya neighborhood. When they arrived, it was discovered that there were over 1,900 cannabis plants inside the home. There was a suspect arrested at the scene. And all the cannabis plants were removed within the first day, so. It was nice that it was cleaned up quickly. Here are some photographs that were taken at the time inside the home. Quite an extensive operation for cultivation of those plants. As you can see, with the lights and various different racks and things. To give you a little bit of a background, I mentioned this is the first citation from a relatively new ordinance. It's called the Personal Cultivation Ordinance, and it was developed in conjunction with the, our police chief, Oscar Ortiz, now Sheriff Ortiz. And the purpose for it is to have safe standards for complying with the state initiative that allows for personal cultivation for cannabis use at home. And so the state law does allow for six plants inside a personal home or in a greenhouse or some secured structure typically in the rear of the property, can't be visible from the street. So normally find them if you're anywhere, it'll be in the backyard. And so this intended for personal use only. The other reason for the ordinance is to help provide a fine structure to help deter commercial cannabis activities in homes. Over the years, there have been a number of them with very similar photographs to this one that you've seen tonight. And the idea here is to provide homeowners and residents some guidelines here on what they can do for their own personal use. And should it become commercial business, then there are some enforcement mechanisms that the law enforcement can use. Typically, as we've seen just in the photographs, there are unpermitted improvements. There are already ordinances that address a lot of that as well. So we kind of brought them together into one consolidated cross-referenced ordinance. I'd mentioned that the intent here is to discourage commercial use and to provide guidance for homeowners and residents who are just growing it for themselves. And so there's a two-tier fine structure. We envision that there could be residents who just don't know the rules and maybe a little bit over that. And so there is a fine structure for that. It's tier one. And it's smaller than tier two. But tier one is $200 per day per plant, a maximum of $1,000 a day. There is a higher tier for larger plants found in the home. The threshold here is 20 plants or more. Certainly, this exceeded that by quite a lot. And so it's a higher amount, $500 per day per plant, but capped at $5,000 a day. And we've mentioned the plants were all removed after the first day. And then just to clarify, outdoor cultivation is not permitted, and so the threshold for that is any plants. But we're not talking about that issue tonight. In addition to just the number of plants, there, we've mentioned that this, the ordinance provides for criteria for safe growing for personal use. And so there are about 11 standards in the ordinance, and it was noted that there were seven of them that were violated in this particular case. And they're listed here. I didn't write all the words in the, each of the criteria, just enough to give you a sense of what the issue was speaking to. So you have a sense that there, there were in fact seven different building code violations that went along with this. So the process to enforce the ordinance is through citation. Excuse me, I mentioned that the 1,900 plants, it puts them in the tier two category. Mentioned there were seven indoor cultivation violations. The appellants are in fact the owners of the home. They received citation soon after the police arrived on the scene. And I'd mentioned the maximum fine is for $5,000 for one day. With the plants being gone, then it's just, just the one day. Every day in which the plants are on the property is a separate and new violation. So it was good that they were all removed after the first day. And then the reason we're here tonight is because receipts of, of an appeal can, of a citation can appeal that to the planning commission. So there's very simple criteria for granting an appeal. If either of these criteria are true, then that will be grounds for granting an appeal. The first one would be that there is in fact no violation of the municipal code or the applicable code that's being cited in the appeal. And the second one would be that the, basically the citation was given to the wrong person. They're not the responsible person as the code defines. So in a very simple sense, the planning commission's role here tonight is to determine whether or not staff was correct in giving the right party a citation and that there was in fact a violation. The role here for planning reasons is to second guess the ordinance or the fine structure or any of that sort. It's, you're, you're here to, to see the evidence and determine if the citation was granted correctly. So it's very kind of a narrow band, which is different from the planning commission. And typically you have more discretion in your decision making, but in this particular case, it's more of a technical review of work that has been done by staff. So with respect to the first criteria, was there in fact a violation? There is a police record that was made at the time and then also photographs that we've shared with you tonight to demonstrate that there was in fact a violation at this address. So the first criteria for overturning the appeal or rather turning the citation has not been met. And then the second criteria has to do with whether or not the citation was given to the correct person. And the code defines that as a responsible person who is someone who is the owner of the property. They could also be an agent of a business entity or so. I guess if someone is under 18, then they would be the parent or guardian. The second two bullet points don't apply here. The first one does. It would be the owner of the property. There is another subcategory in this, that they were responsible for the property, the cause or maintain the violation. And on this aspect, consulted the city attorney who pointed out that there's a California Civil Code that makes a landlord liable for the condition of their property. And so this in fact was their property. They are the landlord. They're responsible for the condition of the property. The property in fact has violations. So in both cases, for the second criteria, they're in fact a responsible person. And so simply said they were the correct individuals to receive the citation. So in this case, the second criteria has not been met. So that would then invalidate a reason that in staff's point of view, looking at the criteria in the ordinance as a reason to overturn the citation. So perhaps repeating myself, but the staff recommendation for the commission would be on the basis that the criteria was not met. In accordance with our municipal code, we recommend that you deny the administrative citation appeal for the indoor cannabis cultivation violation. So if you have any questions, glad to answer that this time. Oh, I also should mention our state training courses here as always, but we also have with us tonight. We have the police sergeant that was at the site, Mr. Walsh. And I believe our police, new police chief, Rick Greenberg is also with us tonight.
Okay. I, I do have one question about the removal. So it was, it was there for one day to our knowledge, but who, who did, did the owner have it removed or did police or some other entity remove the plants?
I'm going to stop sharing my screen. I believe this probably best answered by either the police chief or Sergeant Walsh.
I can answer that. Rick Greenberg, new police chief here in American Canyon. I know I haven't met all of you.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you. So yes, I was actually on scene. I was actually a lieutenant prior to my position now of our narcotics unit. And I was out there with Detective Walsh and law enforcement removed the plants at the time we were called to the house, so.
Okay. Commissioner Wong has a question, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Navarro. Welcome Chief Greenberg to the Planning Commission. I think my question probably is directed to the chief or perhaps the detective on site. So I think the issue before us was whether this right person was issued the citation. So I have two questions in that regard. Was the occupant cited as well? So that occupant and landlord both received a citation or is the citation issued only to the landlord? That's my first question. And the second question I had was, is, was there any visible evidence from the exterior of the house that this indoor cultivation of 1,900 plants was happening?
So on the citations, I believe those were issued by code enforcement. So law enforcement, we don't issue the, the citations for that, so I don't have the answer to that. And I'll defer your second question to Detective Walsh.
Yeah, from the outside of the house itself, there was no, they took extreme measure to conceal the activity going on inside. So from standing outside and talking to other people in the area, they, nobody had any idea.
And there was mention in the staff report that there were bars on the windows. So those bars were not visible from the outside.
No, the bars were welded and installed on the interior to prevent anybody from breaking into the house.
Okay, so the landlords then, unless they arranged to do an interior inspection of the property or unless they were somehow involved with the occupant in this endeavor, I mean, you, they would have no way of knowing just from the exterior of the house that this was going on, basically.
Correct.
Okay. Um.
Commissioner Wong, if I could answer the first question. The, there may be others as well that could be given a citation, but there, the code accommodates really only one party receiving a citation. We wouldn't give a citation to two and then they split it or it's not twice the amount. Typically, when there is a citation, the property owner is, is the first place in which the citation would be granted. Would be sent, would be sent to, our city attorney might have a comment on that. And secondly, with respect to whether or not there's any outward visibility, that is not unusual. But it doesn't negate the fact that there was a violation or that the landlord was responsible for the interior of the home. And our city attorney might be able to comment on both of those matters.
Yes, I would like to hear more discussion as to why the tenant who could have been cited, because the part that you read did say occupant. And so I'm just interested to understand why the occupant was not cited, why the owner was cited over the occupant.
That's an issue with respect to the enforcement officer, but I think your baseline for evaluating this are the code provisions. Keeping in mind that this is a civil enforcement mechanism that was subject to multiple review by the city council for integration with the citation procedure existing in the city code. Right, the baseline is that the owner of the property, and I'll make an analogy. Like an employer is responsible for the safety or the habitability of the structure. That's the law, right? The, why the ordinance creates the alternative is reflective of what happens with respect to residential property. There is an owner and then sometimes there is an occupant who is not the owner. The fact that an alternative is presented doesn't create any additional requirement under the law that somehow the occupant has to be cited. In fact, the law, which is not only the civil code that's in the staff report, but the implementing ordinance specifically for cannabis states it that way and incorporates it to deal with the situation for enforcement precisely like this. There's no comparable duty on the occupant to ensure that whatever the purposes of occupancy of the structure are in compliance with applicable law. They're presumed to comply with applicable law, and we don't have a copy of the lease here. So we don't know what the landlord said. So the provisions of both state law and our ordinance are strict. Why that is, I think it goes back to the legislative history as developed in the staff report of cannabis being legalized in the state of California and having standards exactly as our ordinance sets forth for the number of plants that can be cultivated by individuals. And I think that's also germane to this issue, right? It's not a situation where there were 20 more or 30 more or 50 more. Do the math. So both state law and the ordinance place obligations on both the owner and the occupant. There's no requirement that the occupant be cited in a situation like this. Correspondingly, the legal obligation for compliance with habitability standards and all applicable law resides with the owner.
So I understand that code enforcement could have cited the occupant or they could have cited the landlord. They had that decision to make. And I understand what you're saying about the house being habitable and safe for residential occupancy. But it seems like to pursue that angle that it wasn't habitable and safe for potential, I mean, for residential use. It doesn't seem like that would fall under the cannabis ordinance. It seems like that would be a different ordinance to be enforced. So I'm sort of, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but that's how I'm looking at this. I, I'd like to understand why the occupant wasn't cited. To me, that's the person most directly responsible for this very egregious breach.
With all due respect, Commissioner, I don't think you could come to that conclusion. I would suggest consistent with 912090 that if the occupant or the owner is present, that you be allowed to hear their testimony.
Okay.
And as, but I would also think that part of the, part of the, part of the, the city ordinances that govern your decision in this matter are those that set the fines on the two-tier level that the planning director emphasized. Right, and it's, you know, important to note that the city council went through that meticulously and used the word gregarious for distinguishing the amount of fines accomplished between tier one and tier two. So, you know, I think there's, you know, this is a public hearing. There's the, there's the opportunity for presentation of evidence by the owner or the occupant.
Thank you. No, I, I'm, those were my questions, thank you.
Okay, are there any other commissioners with questions?
I'm just curious, when, when, just the timeline of, when, when did the the occupant start residing in, on the property? Maybe that's for the owner to answer, Brenton, if you have that.
I can answer that. According to the investigation, the occupant responsible started renting or leasing that residence in November of 2020, beginning of November. Which is in and about the time that the residence was purchased by the owners.
Anything else, Commissioner Malari?
That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Wong, you had something?
I, I did have one question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
For a quick, well, can I jump in for just a quick se- second? Because I think Detective Walsh was off on the year and I wanted to verify because.
Okay.
Because I think it was probably 19, not 20, when that occurred, given the dates of everything that went down.
So we responded in 2021, that was this year. And the, according to the rental agreement, and the, I believe the parcel record shows the sale occurring in 2020, if I'm not.
Okay, I, I may be off then. I, I just give it, give it a time, I just wanted to verify.
That's correct.
It says December 1st, 2020.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions from commissioners? I just, maybe, Mr. Ross, you could clarify, what is it that we narrowly, can you just reiterate? I, I know Brent spoke to it. What we are here to, to, for the appeal? What, what, what are our guidelines again?
To evaluate whether there's a basis for the appeal, right?
That's it, right?
That, that's set forth, right, in the staff report. That is the standard of the ordinance.
Okay, all right. So I guess it seems now would be the time for, for the appellant to, to state their case. But I just would like to emphasize the narrowness of what we have to decide about. So with, with that, I can turn it over to, I see Wendy Wu. Would you like to respond or make comments to this appeal?
Ms. Wu, I've asked you to unmute yourself, if you could please do that now. Ms. Wu, could you please unmute yourself? And I have allowed you to show your video. Ms. Wu? Oh, here we go, they're connecting again.
Okay, we can, we can see you, Ms. Wu.
Our audio is still connecting.
She appears to be talking, Ms. Wu, we cannot hear you.
Ms. Wu, your second connection doesn't appear to have a microphone. It seems like we might have lost her.
Yeah, there's no way that, man, I, well, let me ask this of all the commissioners, did everybody read the, the response of the, of the owner? Yes? It is my interpretation, so I'm just wanting to clarify with Mr. Ross. It doesn't seem like their appeal in writing addressed any of the issues that are really before us, is, is, am I correct in that interpretation?
I think you could draw that conclusion from the appeal. But I would also say that under chapter nine of the municipal code on citation hearings, the appellant has the right to present evidence at this hearing.
Okay.
And that, that, that ability appears to be not capable of fulfillment now or being frustrated. I know we have contact information for the appellant. So my suggestion would be that we see if we can contact the appellant and maybe stay this portion of your agenda tonight. Proceed to the second matter, you know, or take a five-minute recess to establish that connection so that the appellant's right to present evidence can be fulfilled. I see she's back gone now, at least on my screen.
Okay, and it does appear to have a mic.
Yes, I'm asking her to unmute herself. Ms. Wu, can you unmute yourself, please? Ms. Wu, if you would like to call in, I have sent you the caller number. But I can also ask you to call in at 48638. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to email Ms. Wu the caller number again. But it may take a few moments for her to call and respond.
Understood, thank you.
And she hasn't called in yet.
Can I ask a question while we're waiting?
Sure.
So I, I don't know if we're allowed to ask this. But so when this home invasion happened and the police went out and they found all the plants, someone was arrested and I know there was a trial date mentioned. On, who was arrested as responsible for the 1,916 marijuana plants?
I would, I believe Frank should have that, Detective Walsh should have that information if he's still on.
Yeah, sorry. His last name was Ken, first of Zen, Z-H-E-N.
So the owners of the property were not part of the arrest and being responsible for the cultivation of the plant?
Not as of this point yet.
Okay.
There, there, I mean, the investigation is still ongoing, but
Okay.
They, they were not arrested, they were not on scene.
Okay, so at this point in time, the only person arrested on the arrest record is the occupant at this time?
Correct.
Commissioner, I, I think the only relevance of what's just been stated is that there is a criminal proceeding. But beyond that, there are different standards associated with a criminal proceeding. There's a presumption of innocence. And it has no bearing to the standard of proof that's applicable in this citation procedure under chapter eight, the municipal code. The implementing procedures for a hearing under chapter nine, two separate issues.
So, Mr. Ross, when you said that under the criminal code, there's a presumption of innocence, but yet it's a different in our civil procedure? It doesn't have the same level of, can you repeat that again, please?
The criminal proceeding, other than to know that one is, you know, being pursued by the law enforcement agencies involved, isn't relevant to the civil proceeding. And in any event, you know, whoever was cited and arrested, there's a presumption of innocence. But my, my point is still the same, is that's a different proceeding. It's subject to different burdens of proof. Maybe the one issue stated by Detective Walsh that is relevant is that the investigation's ongoing.
Okay.
The civil procedure that's before you has been, the fence lines have been painted. But, you know, for, as the legal advisor for the Planning Commission, my principal concern right now is there appears to be an inability for the appellant to be afforded the right under municipal code section 9.12.090D to be able to testify and present witnesses or evidence concerning the citation.
Ms. Jones, I believe we do have Ms. Wu on the phone now?
Correct, I'm going to allow her to speak, Ms. Wu.
Okay.
Please unmute yourself on the phone. Ms. Wu? Hello?
Is that me perhaps, is there?
Okay, hello, Ms. Wu?
Oh, it looks like we lost her. You know, I, I think Mr. Cooper was going to suggest that I call her. I, let me try and do that and then we can put it on speakerphone from my end. One moment, please.
Yeah. Mr. Ross, I imagine you've been in court hearings where there's these technical difficulties. We just freeze while we wait for the technology to get ironed out, I imagine, in those type of legal proceedings.
Well, I, I think what you do is you may wish to consider something. Is to either take a, a short recess of the commission to see if communication can be established or the procedure, you know, she has that right, or he or she have the right, the appellant's. And if, you know, continue it till later in the meeting, right? Take another matter. But because of the difficulty of establishing communication now, I think it might be worth a little bit more time now to see if that can happen. And if it can't happen, then my recommendation would be that you continue this matter.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think I, I wouldn't want to hold the law enforcement, the, the chief and detective here either. So if we can establish in the next, by this next try with speakerphone, then we can continue the matter, I think. It'd be my recommendation, be up to you, all of us to decide though.
Okay, I have Ms. Wu on speakerphone and my phone is, volume is turned up all the way. Ms. Wu, can you please address the Planning Commission? Can, can you hear Ms. Wu, any commissioners?
It's kind of faint.
Ms. Wu?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, I can hear her. Okay, I have her as close, my phone as close to the computer speakers as possible.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Hello? Commissioners, can you hear her?
We can hear her.
Okay, Ms. Wu, they can hear you, please speak.
Oh, okay, yes. Everybody that is here, have changed the year. Okay, on November, I bought a house. And then on December, somebody rent my house. And, and then I, I left them to live there. And I, I didn't care what they see over there, but it seems there's a COVID-19. I can't go inside the house here. I only sit outside and it seems really nice, like before. So that's why I didn't know what they see inside. So until one day, the police called me and then I know. So I have no idea what they see in there. They seemed to be really nice. That's why I didn't know anything. So right now, I had a citation and I, I feel very sad. I can't leave every night, feel very uncomfortable. And such a terrible problem. And because I have to pay for the loan every month and I need to pay for the property tax, the high property tax, everything. Right now, I have to get the permit, different type of permit and fix the house, do a lot of things. I, I can't see why I feel so sad. And, and the citation, I just, you can give me a chance. Because I, there's nothing to do with here. I only bought a house and then to them, I didn't know anything about what they're seeing. So please give me a chance and, and like, give me a break for the citation.
Does anybody have a question for Ms. Wu?
Ms. Wu, where do you actually reside in? What, what city or how far out are you from the American Canyon residence that you purchased?
You mean, I can't hear, you mean how far I live from the house here?
Yeah, where, where do you currently reside?
I can't hear.
Nicole, you can repeat the question here.
Ms. Wu, you were being asked where you currently reside, and how far away from the, the rental house you live in?
Oh, I, I live in this one, that's why I, I shop by all the time.
Okay.
But the season COVID-19, I can't go inside, they, they ask me to stay in the house and talk to me outside. So that's why I see them, I, I couldn't have a chance to go inside.
And I'm sorry, I missed her answer, can someone repeat it?
I have no idea where.
She said that she lives in Richmond, and that she does go by the house frequently, but she could only go by the outside of the house. That because of COVID, the occupants required her to wear a mask, and she could not go inside.
Nicole, I have a question.
Yeah, at the beginning of this, you said you had, I think you said something like, had Ms. Wu on the line, and something about a, like a PowerPoint presentation or something, what, what did, a visual presentation? Does she have a visual presentation? No?
I didn't say anything about a visual presentation.
Okay, alright.
Commissioner Wong has her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms., Commissioner Wong?
Um, I, I have a question for Ms. Wu, and Nicole, maybe you can repeat it. I'd like to understand from her if she's managing the rental herself directly, or if she's working with a property management company?
Ms. Wu?
No, yeah.
Did you hear the question?
Uh, it just be asking, do I have somebody like agent, right?
Correct.
Uh, no, yes, somebody, a friend introduced to me, and they said, somebody new for, to close to your area. So ask you to buy a house for them, I told them, oh, I just bought a house, if you like, you can live in my house later. So I, no, no agent.
Commissioners, did you hear that answer?
And so it sounds, sounds like she found the applicant through a friend. And so she, so she's not using a property manager.
Uh huh, yes.
Okay, so, so Ms. Wu, did you run a background check on this tenant?
Background or credit check?
No, no, no background check, but because my friend and Tony, he, he's a friend looking for a house. I was thinking, friend, Tony is here, so that's why I, I let them rent the house.
Okay, so it sounds like there was no kind of, did you ask for rent references from previous rentals?
Uh, no, because the friend, the friend introduced, so I didn't do anything, just let them sign the paper, and how much you permit, I didn't know, they seem like these, they tell me, they will leave all the whole family, people there.
Okay, is, is this your first rental property?
Uh, no, I do have a lot of properties, all ones, and but somebody take care for me, like agents. So but that this one, I didn't look for agents, I was thinking, friend introduced, and I, I can say for a little bit, because the loan is high.
I, I'm not sure if I heard all of that response, it sounds like she has another rental property with an agent. And then the?
And she didn't hire an agent for this property because it was through a friend, before it was through a friend, and she thought she could save money.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further, that she, anything further that she would like to tell us or let us know in her appeal?
Can I say something?
Certainly.
Yeah, yeah, hi, my name's Tadeem Chou Wu. I'm the Wendy's husband, yeah. During that time, he had the retirement, senior citizens, and I always thinking about I can save the money with my wife, so that's why this property, we didn't hire the agents. He thought it's a poor life thing, everything is careful for the violence. So that time, we very seldom to eat, so that's why that time is a big trouble. I be very sorry for the community, very sorry for the American Canyon, yeah. But for me and my wife, we always get the community, and also get the livelihood, it's very good. But that time, we thinking about, inside is a very terrible, thinking about need to loan the money from the bank to fix the property, because it's a terrible hobby. Ask more than fifty thousand or eighty thousand to fix that. Me, why not use artists for the demo permit, also the medical permit, and also need to, better cotton to proof, and then we can fix this property. Right now, it's almost two months, we always pay the high as a mortgage. You know, that is the problem right now. I hope that your community can understand, you know, our problem, and then make your best. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions of the appellant from the commissioners? Okay. All right, one, one last time, so if they have, if the appellant has nothing further to say, then I guess we can, okay, Mr. Ross, please go ahead.
Okay. I, you know, I'm watching the recording light on the portion of the screen where I see it, sometimes it's on, sometimes it's off. I think the quality of the exchange, I mean, you know, everybody's doing the best they can, is not great. I mean, I think there were times when I certainly couldn't hear the appellant, either one. What I'm gonna recommend is, I think you ought to continue this matter, and that I'll help staff prepare the communication, the communication be directed, directed to the appellees, just to say, look, there were some difficulties in sound at the hearing, and in order to assure that fairness, procedural due process is made, specifically state the requirements of the ordinance, and the staff recommendation, and ask if they'd like to submit something further in writing to clarify their position in view of the provisions of chapter nine that are applicable to the property. I think, you know, regardless of what decision you make, you've got to base it on evidence, and you've got to make some specific findings. And I just, I think in order to ensure fairness, that's the recommendation I would make to your commission at this time. With the type of notification to the appellant, obviously copies to law enforcement in view of the continuing investigation. But I, I think that's, that's my recommendation to reach a decision where you can have satisfaction that a fair hearing has been had before you evaluate the evidence to make a decision.
Okay. Are, are you in agreement with that, Mr. Cooper?
Um, yes, well heartedly, I think it's important that we have a, definitely have a, a fair hearing.
Okay. So Commissioner Altman, why don't we go through and see, take a test of what you guys, each of you feel?
It's not a question of what I feel, I mean, I, I happen to agree with City Attorney Ross. I had a very hard time hearing, I'm not sure I heard all, and, you know, I think that in, in it's important for fairness sake, that we continue this hearing to another time, so we can have the appellant provide a full, you know, defense of, of their, you know, a full hearing, I should say, of their appeal. Because I don't think we got that, so I am making a motion that we continue this item to the soonest possible forward date, I will let Planning Director Cooper handle the calendaring of everything, if this motion passes.
Okay.
Navarro, your next regular meeting is August twenty sixth.
Okay, so, so there's a motion to continue this item, due to technical difficulties, to August twenty sixth meeting. Do, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Wong, seconds, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Oh wait, I think, I think before you take the roll call, you ought to ask about other views of commissioners on the motion.
Okay.
If there are.
Okay, all right, before roll call, we'll go, go around, Commissioner Wong, you wanna?
I, I support continuing stuff this, I did have difficulty in hearing the, in hearing some of the information that she provided to us, and I had to ask Nicole to repeat some of it, so I would definitely like to have a continuation, so that hopefully next time we can hear, I want to make sure that I hear everything they had to say in entire, in entirety directly, that would be my preference. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Malory, or Vice Chair?
Yeah, I definitely agree with that as well, but also need to be prepared as a, you know, one of the panelists, regardless of, you know, whoever it may be, ourselves or anybody else, just, you know, technical difficulties and issues that potentially come up, that arise. Be prepared for, you know, to, to call in, or have, have the, the means to be able to present.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Goff?
I'm in agreement with the rest of the commission, I think this should be continued, and just make sure that, as Counselor Ross suggested, that the information is submitted in writing, so it can be addressed. Because who knows if these technology difficulties will continue.
Okay. Okay, is there any other further comment from commissioners? Okay, I, I, I agree with the continuance, I think I, I think it will also give the appellant's a chance to kind of, under, greater have a greater ability of understanding of what this appeal is actually for, and to make sure that they can clearly and, and, you know, forthrightly take, present their case to us. So I'm in, I'm in accord with the other commissioners. So with that, can we go ahead now and have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
I.
Commissioner Goff?
I.
Commissioner Wong?
Hi.
Vice Chair Malory?
Hi.
Chair Navarro?
Hi. Okay, so motion passes, and and so, next matter.
I think, I think we ought to state on the record, so as a result of the motion, this matter has been continued to the commission's meeting of August twenty six, twenty twenty one, with the direction that there will be a staff communication to the appellees, clearly stating the requirements of the code for which evidence can be presented to overcome the conditions that cause the issuance of the citation.
Okay.
Okay, that's in the record, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, on this matter, so we will move to the next matter, which is the to incorporate climate change adaptation and greenhouse gas reduction policies into the general plan, general plan land use element. We'll hear from Steph.
Thank you, Chair Navarro and Planning Commission, it's nice to be able to move to something perhaps a little more tangible, even though we are still discussing policies, but these would be leading up to adoption of policies and documents, so feel a little more real than, than having a workshop or a moratorium that expires. So I do have a presentation just to kind of run through, it's, it's very similar to our workshop presentation with a few changes. And so with that, I'll be able to give you an update here on where we are. Okay, so hopefully you have the homepage there. Great. So I think we're all very much aware, if anybody has been paying attention lately, with the serious consequences of climate change. City Council just a couple of days ago was discussing, you know, urgings with water supply, of course, we're seeing the effects of wildfires and, and just a host of things around the world and locally. So it's a very serious issue that requires bold action. American Canyon has a long history of sustainability policies, and so this is, I think, right in line with a lot of the direction that has been started many, many years ago, and so I think we're not sort of treading new ground here to be able to advance further efforts to adapt to climate change and hopefully reverse it. We talk more specifically about the transportation aspect of climate change. We do have transportation in California is the single largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in California, and the, the single largest source, rather, is passenger vehicles, so transportation clearly largest source, the single largest source passenger vehicles, which really led to the moratorium on fuel stations in American Canyon. We talked a little bit at the last meeting about the general plan, I don't want to spend a lot of time about that, but I did want to add in some maybe higher level perspective that the city attorney offered up, having to do with the general welfare standard in the California constitution, that really is the right for a city to make policies that further public health, safety, and welfare. And then flows from that is a requirement for the general plan and the policies and, and everything after that. We talked about this last time, just kind of wanted to have it here in case as a refresher, or if there are any new visitors to tonight's meeting, on how the general plan structures each of the elements. There's a variety of elements to the general plan, each one is equal, but there are often a lot of policies in the land use element itself. Goes from very general opportunities all the way down to very specific programs, such as zone changes that are itself in the general plan, but needs to be that are itself in the general plan, but needs to be consistent with all of the policies, objectives and goals in the general plan itself. Um, getting into the specific general plan amendments, um our workshop last week had a variety of them that were proposed. And uh we had terrific feedback from the planning commission that's been incorporated into the version that we're talking about tonight. And so among the uh policymakers that were listed last time by that of the planning commission because of your contributions at our last meeting that we've got um to discuss today. So you can see where we've made changes to the uh draft policies from the last meeting. I've bolded and highlighted in yellow um the parts in which the planning commission added its input. Um, hopefully I captured it all correctly and thoroughly. Um, but uh we're looking at the very high level opportunities and constraints. Um, we did have commission input that decreased air quality is certainly an impact. Um, just ask anybody in New York City today. Um, from impacts wildfires all the way over in Oregon. So uh air quality is certainly an impact, and we experienced that here in American Canyon with some of the more recent wildfires. Um, so that's definitely um uh an easy um and um uh certainly one we've all lived with. Um, back into some of the goals, there um didn't aren't any particular amendments from the planning commission for the goal, but certainly I think we're all in agreement with decisive near term action. Um, that is something that is foremost on the minds of the Napa County, Napa County Climate Action Committee and American Canyon's representatives on that committee. Um, objectives, um reduce direct and impact, direct and indirect sources of greenhouse gas emissions, transportation sources, of course, being the largest source um is certainly important um from new renovated and existing development to the extent we can do that. Um, and then flows from that a variety of policies. Um, working with Napa County jurisdictions, that is something that Napa County is good at doing at. Uh, we're very collegial um uh region here. Um, and being small, we're able to communicate very effectively and work together. Um, the Napa County Climate Action Committee is just one example um where we're working together to um find ways to um reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Another policy has to do with recognizing transportation contribution to greenhouse gations and emissions in uh American Canyon, California more broadly. Um, and speaking more directly to the need to prohibit construction of new fossil fuel stations in American Canyon. Um, this one here is an amendment by the planning commission uh when we're looking at what might be an alternative to fossil fuel stations. Um, that would be uh electric vehicle charging stations and also hydrogen um with uh their fuel cells. So that's uh would be an amendment to this policy. Um, it looks like that is certainly an area Caltrans has made um its documentation about the future of electric vehicles and hydrogen is is kind of a cousin to that. Um, so we don't want to overlook an obvious um and possible source of new transportation uh fuel in American Canyon. Uh, another policy here, um encouraging compact uh mixed use form. That's um is something that the city has uh been embarking on for a long time. And it really comes down to Napa County and the agricultural reserve, limiting the opportunity for sprawl and some of the policies there. Um, I think this is all very important to uh use our land wisely. And um the Broadway District Specific Plan right here in the center of town really is is a hallmark um policy document specifically intended to grow smart with hot jobs, houses, transit, multimodal facilities, all that, all near each other. Um, and um the other benefit is a great place to live. It's nicer, healthier. Um, another policy here, um, this is something that has uh was actually addressed in our uh climate action plan all the way back in twenty thirteen. Um, it was a bit of a reach back then, not so much now perhaps um to have a greater energy efficiency than state standard. Um, that policy did make its way into the EIR for Watson Ranch. And also the Broadway District Specific Plan, not in the EIR, but it's actually in the specific plan itself. And so those are two very large policy documents that will help guide much of the city's future growth. Already speaking to the issue of greater energy efficiency. Um, also might add that it was also um an EIR mitigation for Napa Junction Three, went all the way back to twenty eleven. So um seems like this is something that has been um addressed already in many ways, so it's not super new. News, so why not fold it into the general plan? Um, and then we have here an additional uh policy that was brought by the planning commission um that addresses vehicle idling. There is state law already um with a limit on uh truck vehicle idling, but there's also passenger vehicle idling. And so um there perhaps may be limited ways in which the city can specifically enforce it. But I think through education, um as well as taking a look at our conditions of approval for industrial projects, there is room there to perhaps do better than state law. And having a basis in the general plan certainly is one way that gives a city the ability to to have those kinds of conversations. So that's the limit of of the general plan policies we have um for greenhouse gas and climate change. Uh, much like we talked about in June with amendments by the planning commission. Um, today, of course, uh being a hearing for a recommendation of the council, it's a public hearing. Uh, I know we have some folks that are are tuned in, perhaps they want to say something. Um, and then with that, with that, um, the planning commission would give council uh direction to council and will forward that on to the city council with a public hearing there to amend the general plan. Of course, the council is the decision maker and that would be have the capacity to adopt a a resolution to amend the general plan. So glad to answer any questions you have at this time on on the proposed amendments.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for your presentation, very succinct and clear. I think we've gone through quite a bit. That's um evidenced by this presentation. Um, so um shall we um, any comments from the commissioners before we open public comment? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Altman.
Sorry about the delay, having a little computer difficulty. Nothing major, though. Um. I want to just quickly touch on the engine idling issue. Um, and I know if I if I'm recalling correctly and if I heard correctly, there are state guidelines on it, but they are on um truck idling, basically, not passenger vehicle idling, and perhaps that ties in with where I'm going here. But one of the areas that um we have tremendous engine idling going on is on Highway twenty nine northbound, south of West American Canyon Road. And part of the reason for that is the left hand turn lane to go onto West American Canyon Road is a rather short lane, and it is often blocked. So that if you're looking to make that left hand turn during rush hour, you can't even get into it for quite a while. So you're sitting there at traffic lights, idling for one, two, maybe three light cycles. That if we could get our friends at Caltrans to just fix and extend that lane, and you have a dirt median, all you have to do is some minor concrete work and a little bit of paving. And as far as I'm concerned, frankly, they could even skip the paving, although by their standards, they couldn't. Um, and we will help reduce passenger vehicle, engine idling and greenhouse gas emissions in the city of American Canyon. So as we move forward with this, I am hopeful that the uh city can push this issue with Caltrans because it is such a relatively minor fix of just removing the curb as it exists and extending that lane. Um frankly, they could go quite a bit, and it will have a significant, I believe, impact on uh the engine idling issue. So I I do want to get that on the record so that um we have something with with which we can uh discuss uh with others at some point. So that's my my comment.
Okay. Any anyone else want to say something before public comment?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead, please.
Okay.
And this is just a follow on to a Commissioner Altman. Um, while that intersection in the turn lane, there is uh an issue without saying, I think it might be a good idea for the city to investigate other items that can reduce idling and what I'm really thinking about, there are four way stops in in the various uh road systems that we have in American Canyon. Uh, people hate them, but you know, roundabouts are the way to go. Um, it's going to cut down all that idling. You don't have the stops and waits. So I think a lot of intersections, especially when we look at some of the new developments, if we can encourage the development and building of roundabouts versus necessarily four way stops. Um, especially in neighborhoods. It's a little bit more difficult on the highways um and the main thoroughfares, but definitely in the in the neighborhoods.
Okay. All right, any anyone else? Okay, um, let's go ahead and open public comment.
At this time, if you have public item, public comment for this item, please raise your hand. And I will do my best to take you in the order received. Okay, we have Jim Wilson. Um, Mr. Wilson, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And begin speaking.
Thank you, uh, American Canyon Planning Commissioners. The members of the Napa Climate Now Steering Committee would like to express our continued support of the steps you're taking this week toward ensuring the inclusion of climate change concerns in the general plan. Your actions are essential as these changes are necessary to allow zoning restrictions on future fuel station development. It's our hope that as American Canyon updates its general plan, the city will consider including a climate change and sustainability element as contained in both the Saint Alina and draft City of Napa general plans. When all jurisdictions within Napa County share the collective goal of addressing both community wide climate impacts and climate resilience, our shared vision and actions can provide crucial steps in supporting a livable future. With each action, you'll set an example for all of Napa County. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other public comment, Ms. Jones?
If you have public comment, if you have comments for this item, please raise your hand. There currently no hands raised.
Okay.
We do have several people, so I'm going to call it a second time. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, Chair Navarro, nobody seems to be raising their hand at this time.
Okay. All right, so then I guess with that, we'll close pub- public comment. And um go to uh commissioners, comments, or questions, or clarifications. Commissioner Wong, I wish you'd just raise your hand.
Thank you. Um, I I did want to acknowledge that we did receive written public comment on this, Nicole. Do you want to maybe can we read their names out?
We did receive written public comment, and they were sent to you. They will also be uploaded to the site um from Christopher James. Um it was one from Napa Community Action Network and also one from Marina Seravanti.
Thank you. Um, I did have some comments to make. Should I go ahead at this time?
Yes.
Chair Navarro.
Yes.
Okay, so um so Brad, I had a general question. And I liked, I like, first of all, thank you for a great presentation. Um, I did look at it and I and based on my notes and my memory, you you captured everybody's input. I was happy to see decreased air quality included. Um I I did have a question that when we talk about one three, one point thirty seven point six, which is about the vehicle idling, you specifically called out educate residents. Why is the focus on residents? Why isn't it just on, you know, residents, businesses who are here in American Canyon, city staff who drive around in American Canyon? Why? Why does it say residents?
Well, that's a good question. Um, we could certainly expand um who might get education. It wasn't meant to be um limiting. That's kind of the reason why we have you take a look at it. It's a good idea. So it's true, yeah, I I I I don't think I have a problem with expanding it. I don't, and I would be surprised if your other commissioners did as well, but um it's instead of other than residents, maybe there's a a more generic word, just education more generically, so we don't exclude anybody by omission.
I think that would be great because I do want to follow up on one of the public comments that we received, one from Chris James. And um he talked about noticing, I guess it's the park maintenance crew. They drive, you know, gas trucks, and they often leave them idle while they want to do things. So that was an instance in my mind where the term residents maybe didn't apply. And I was wondering, I mean, I I'm not sure how specific we want to be in the general plan, but it seems like there is an area there where we want to also include our own city policies to discourage idling, like in that example. I don't know if there's, I don't know if that's a current practice, if staff still does that, you know, the park maintenance crew or if they've changed, but it may be just I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is I'd like it to be that it's not just focused on on reduced idling. I mean, maybe there's other areas or other practices that we have that should also be examined under the lens of um reducing emissions, if that makes sense. And idling is just one great example, but I don't know if that's maybe can be accomplished by what you need to put into your that piece, if that makes sense.
Um, I hear what you're saying. Um I'm just looking back at the policies and I'm wondering if there's room for what you're suggesting in in some of these policies. I'm getting back to, you know, what are decisive short term actions? Um, I think you're mentioning some of them. The general plan shouldn't be too too specific because then once you've done it, that was uh it it should have more of an umbrella um type of a function so that you can make decisions. You know, consistent with your general plan and and not necessarily, once again, uh omit something by exclusion or being too too precise.
Right, and I like the example. I thought reducing the idling time is a great example, but it seemed very oddly specific to me when I think there's other areas where we could also improve, and I think this was touched upon in the public comment as well that Chris James submitted. We look at, um, I live on Wetlands Edge Road, and I see the um landscape maintenance crew come out. They have gas blowers, for example. I mean, that may be an example where our policy could be, we ask our um our city contractors, you know, can, is there a possibility, can we use, you know, battery operated equipment, or maybe if there's an area where there's a power source, could they be, you know, electric equipment? And I I I guess I just don't want to be too specific and exclude other areas of improvement that may be possible. Um, so that was one comment that I had. And the other comment was there's one part, there was one item where you talked about the reach code, and you had a specific specific measurable number. You said fifteen percent. And so I I looked at all the other items. And as you said, they were written so that they didn't really have any sort of measurement around them. as you said, they were written so that they didn't really have any sort of measurement around them. Should we be writing these so that we can measure them or is that not necessarily the precise way general plans are written?
I, well, I think the general plan has room to be specific when it's um, something that could be, you, you could do. Um, you know, if we look at, um, if we look at, say, one of the policies. Let me get back here. Where you might not know what the percentage is, like if you had to guess, you'd guess wrong.
Right, right.
Looking, you know, at, at direct and indirect sources of greenhouse gas emissions, I'm not sure we could know what specifically that is or what the number might be. Um, but it is a commitment to look at, at where these things exist.
So in, in that example, there was another one, one point three seven point four where we talk about vehicle miles traveled. We want to look at land uses and encourage pedestrian bicycle trails. And I know we have a plan for that currently, but maybe is that an area where we could put like a target objective, say like every year we want to add X number or, I mean, somehow, I mean, it seemed to me that might be an area where we could kind of try and put some objectives there about how we're going to become more friendly. So like maybe like twenty years in the future, you can bicycle everywhere or, or just some kind of to quantify it. So we have goals that we know we're making progress.
Well, I mean, we could drill down on what that might be. We would need to research what the, you know, what is a feasible option, you know, what might be something we should shoot for. We are in working on the comprehensive general plan, going to be including a climate action component to it. I think where we might be able to get into some more of these details. Part of the objective of doing these amendments this way at this time is to be able to advance to conclusion, the fuel station moratorium, being somewhat shameless about that. And the longer we spend on this, the law, later we'll have to get back to the, the main event. The general plan update. So we're trying to dispose of these things responsibly and comprehensively to achieve the goal. But we could, but I caution over analyzing this and then never getting around to the general plan because we're, we're refining something that only has a lifespan until the next general plan update happens. So I guess balance here, how much is enough to achieve what we're trying to go for? Recognizing it's maybe not thorough in, in a comprehensive general plan sense, but it is enough to be able to um, put to rest the um, policies that were put in motion with the fuel station moratorium.
With that said, I, I do agree with you said, and I'm sorry that I'm getting us bogged down in the details. And I'm, I'm happy to say that, I'm happy to have my notes about these items and to bring them up later at a more appropriate time. And I totally agree with you. I don't want to derail the progress we're making here. So I will follow your guidance. If you feel, you know, it's just more suited to discuss it later, that's perfectly fine with me.
Yeah, we could, if it's important. But I wanted to keep everyone kind of in mind of, of we kind of have a dual ask in front of us. We do certainly want to advance uh, climate change policies. And we also want to advance to conclusion, the fuel station moratorium, which coincidentally has a climate action connection, but in and of itself is not the full range of climate action possibilities that we want to explore with the general plan update.
Yes, and I, I liked how you phrased that. So in that regard, maybe, so if we're focused on this for the fuel station moratorium, so when we get into the general plan process, where there'll be a separate um, committee or discussion about the climate change aspect of it.
Yes, we want to have a climate compliant general plan, which
Okay.
is, is really a great um, way to, to incorporate climate change in the everyday way we do things. And it's, it's, it just uh, makes things a much more efficient from an implementation's part of you and the way we grow and but that isn't really the task we have right now.
Well, well, thank you, Brent, and I, I appreciate the discussion about this. And as I said, I've got my notes, so.
Okay.
But I, you know, what I do think, I want, I wanted to also compliment you on your thinking because this is kind of a primer for the, more the main events. It's maybe like the appetizer to a meal.
Now, I do see, I do see a hand up from the public, but let's still go, let commissioners and then we'll get to to public comment. We can open it up again.
Chair Navarro, I'm sorry, I don't see any hands up.
Oh, really? Oh, maybe it's my hand. Sorry, never mind. Okay. It's my, it's my icon, uh, my pointer turned to our hand. Okay. Any other comments? Uh, Commissioner Golf, you want to go? You have anything? Okay. Vice Chairman Laurie, you're good?
Good, yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right. The floor is yours, Mr. Altman, Commissioner Altman. You're good?
You got my earlier comment, uh, at the moment. Uh, I got nothing further. I want to hear from the public if they've got anything more to add.
Okay. Um, I, I did have a, a question, Brent, if, if you were aware, I, I didn't, I didn't do any research. I didn't hear anything, but I know that in the, the the, what the governor put out last uh, September and it was in our, in our staff report, they, there was a deadline to have some really like, you know, tangible accomplishments and reports by the fifteenth, by last, by, you know, last week or the end of last week. I'm wondering if, um, if you saw any of those results or if there, there any reports we could, we could get pointed to about that.
I could certainly look into it. I haven't seen anything, but um, I, I'm thinking that is, you know, as we move this on to the city council, I'm happy to inform the council that the commission is enthusiastic about climate change policies. They're, they're really looking for doing more than this. And, and that is something we intend to do with the general plan update.
Okay. All right, and um, yeah, I guess that was, that was my main thing. I just wondered if there was any further things that we might be able to capture from what they did that we could emulate here. And um, I liked all the input that was given. And this is, you know, this, this has been a very quick, good work in progress, I think. From the expansion of residents on the item that Commissioner Wong was talking about, might consider I, I did, one word smithing I made was by educating local residents, public service uh, and uh, business operators um, as an expansion. So it kind of, kind of, the public service could be, you know, nonprofits, government, whatever. Um, and then, and schools, local schools, um, and um, and then business, whether it's Starbucks or Sonics, you know, like people shouldn't be running their car while they're eating their burger at Sonics and stuff like that.
Or, or maybe language such as, you know, broadly outreach to, you know, variety of groups such as, and then as you'd mentioned, residents, public service, business, operators, so that it's not intended to be only that. There may be other group, you know, haven't mentioned here. That we don't want to miss anybody by omission.
Right.
Broadly and then
Okay, yes. Okay, local, such as, perfect. Okay. All righty, so um, there's, go ahead and see, is there any further public comment?
At this time, if those in attendance have public comment, please raise your hand. So have several people in attendance. Everybody seems to be rather quiet this evening though. So no hands are raised.
All right, okay, so we will close public comment with no comments in between. Mr. Russ, any, any input from your perspective?
Uh, the one thing that I can think of that's been mentioned before is um, uh, something about the city manager and it's just parenthetical is that um, there's a program by Caltrans about uh, signal timing. You know, that, you know, apparently is adaptable. And uh, lessons, you know, encourages free flow of traffic at different volumes. Uh, so that that idling doesn't occur, but that's just a specific example. It doesn't deal with the general intent that's being advanced by staff and uh, is particularly relevant as indicated to the fuel moratorium. So that's just a comment that I'd make, but that is something that's directly tied to that engine idling issue.
Right, and it kind of also would speak to, um, there was somewhere in the language like that it would traffic, you know, traffic, wa- ways of innovative traffic signaling and changes, just as Commissioner Altman spoke to. So, and then, and then, um, you know, we didn't have a chance, but um, but yeah, the, the public comment from uh, Mr. Miller also gave some examples like the police force in Connecticut. You know, and that, those concepts, so it'd be good to have some chance to, in the details, to go through some of these best, better prac- best practices in other communities. That's, so that's all I have. Is there anybody that would like to go ahead and uh, make a motion on this item?
You just maybe add one um, note, when there is a motion, if whoever makes the motion, if they could mention amendments to um, draft policy uh, oh, on engine idling, that's probably specific enough. And that way, it'll be recorded in your, in your motion.
Gotcha.
I'll make a motion to pass a resolution of a planning commission of the City of American Canyon, California, recommending the city council of the City of American Canyon approve a general plan amendment with an update regarding engine idling to adopt climate change adaptation and greenhouse gas reduction policies into the general plan land use element, file number PL twenty-one zero zero one seven.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Commissioner Golf, seconds. I, I noticed Commissioner Altman, you had a question?
I was just going to um, comment that I don't know if we can specifically uh, wedge it in um, in some fashion, but the um, whole notion of, of uh, encouraging the city to explore um, changes in contracting and in uh, our own vehicle usage to reduce or eliminate greenhouse gas impacts. It would be great if that could be included in some fashion.
Um, yeah, Commissioner Navarro and Commissioner, we could um, add a new policy that, that um, would say, you know, seek feasible means to uh, convert city fuel.
To convert the city fleet away from fossil fuel or something like that. I mean,
And equipment.
Yeah.
To
Doesn't that fall under that conduct decisive near-term actions to reduce greenhouse gases? I mean, we're getting to a little bit of fine-tuning specific items that I think are covered in the broader things.
Right.
Again, as mentioned earlier, um, the motion that's already been put forward and seconded, I think, addresses what we need to do in relation to the fuel stations. I mean, that's this conversation. The rest of that can be brought up, I believe, as we get into the continued general plan, uh, redoing the general plan.
Okay, I, 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 I agree with Commissioner Golf, actually. So, um, can we go, so I would like to go ahead and move forward with the motion on the table and any discussion, further discussions about the motion? Okay. All right, with that, um, let's go ahead and uh, do roll call Ms. Jones, please.
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Golf. Commissioner Wong.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Laurie.
Aye.
And Chair Navarro.
Aye. Okay, all right, so motion passes and we now have adopted a recommendation to the city council to approve the climate change and adaptation greenhouse gas reduction policies for the general plan land use element. So. Good job. Yes, all right, thanks again. So shall we go ahead? Is there any, I don't see any business on, on the agenda, any, any come, anything come to mind? Okay, so then we can go to the active planning projects under management staff for a report.
So to quickly go through some of the highlights um, here on our list. We have a lot of interesting projects. Uh, we have a new one. Um, it's number two on your, on your list called Napa Cove. It would get them changed to American Canyon Cove. It's a proposed affordable housing project, um, that would be on Broadway, um, right next to the tennis courts. And uh, at this point, they haven't filed their design permit application, which would come to the planning commission. They do intend to do that um, the next few months, but um, before they do that with affordable housing, they're lining up their tax credit financing. And so um, this TCAC is an acronym for something, means tax credit financing. And there's a number of paperwork that we fill out and there is an enormous amount of work that they have to do in order to be able to uh, apply for this kind of financing. So um, it'll comes around once a year in July, so um, they're, they're working very hard on that. So um, I expect we'll have a new application for that project fairly soon. Um, it's in our Broadway district and the residential zoning, so it's all lining up. The other project we have, of course, is uh, Watson Ranch Lot Ten subdivision, a single-family home, two hundred and nineteen. This is immediately north of the ruins off of what will become the new Rio Del Mar. And um, we're, we'll be bringing that to the planning commission. It has a subdivision map, so goes to the council as well, but the planning commission approves the design permit. Kind, just like it happened with Lot fourteen fifteen last fall. So we'll have that one for you probably next couple of months. Um, let's see, we have um, an appeal for the planning commission denial for the food truck. There were two applications, only one appealed. This one is over by Larry's Truck Toppers and we expect to bring that to the council in August seventeen. We have a design permit for PG&E. They have a, a regional service center in the Napa Logistics Park. It's in the northwest corner of town. And um, so PG&E is, is hoping to have their plans expedited and we're doing the best we can on that. We're having a little bit of a wrangle with landscaping. They didn't want to do any, um, but the zoning code requires it. I'm not sure how we can get around that or we want to. Um, so we're going to be um, talking to them about that. It's the main issue at this point. Pretty much a fenced yard with buildings inside and trucks and vehicles and equipment.
I can make a quick comment. I think we need to hold PG&E to land I can make a quick comment. I think we need to hold PG&E to landscaping and I will point to their uh, substation or whatever it's called at West American Canyon Road and Highway twenty-nine Broadway. And that's supposed to have been cleaned up many, many years, and they have done nothing. And uh, I think we need to hold their feet to the fire big time to get them to actually do what uh, they need to and, and do right by this community.
Yeah, well, the specific plan for that area um, calls for robust landscape screening for, you know, yards after storage and things and is what it is. So, um. Well, you be the judge when it comes, but hopefully we'll have done a good job with them.
Question Brent, for the tacos, Baja Cali food, the one that the appeal period expired, do they have the opportunity to appeal it again, or is it like a one-shot? You gotta just go back and do the whole application again?
Um, I have to look at the code. Um, I think if an application's denied, there is a period of time in which they can't reapply. But I, I always like to look at the code before I answer a question for sure.
Just curious if it's, may pop up again or something, but, okay.
Yeah, I think a lot will depend on how the appeal turns out with the council, because as we talked about um, at our meeting with that issue, it's really, you know, a, an issue that really hasn't come up in this type of form before, so we'll have to wait and see kind of what happens from the appeal for the one application. Um, see, on, on item eight on our list, the Jivenoni Logistics Park, um, there have been some uh, breakthroughs. I'll say in the traffic analysis among the experts, so um, that should help shake loose that one um, and move it forward. Um, that again is a project same size and acreage and square footage as the Napa Logistics Park. Just immediately south, um, between it, now, Green Island Road and Napa Logistics Park is this chunk of property, so it's a, it's a big project. Um, so we expect to see some advances in that. Um, moving up again to the next page, um, the Hampton Inn Hotel. Um, the applicant's been working very hard on responding to staff comments. Um, I believe we got a resubmital just um, yesterday or the day before. And at your meeting with the council next week on Thursday, um, we are going to be talking about uh, bringing an update for everybody on where we are with the project, but more specifically talking about the marketing study, and so um, that should be a good discussion. Looking forward to that. The Oak Hill project, we had um, uh, exciting meeting with the Airport Land Use Commission and predictably, they recommended uh, they made a determination of incompatibility or inconsistency with the Airport Land Use Plan. Um, our city attorney has been working very, very hard on that, um, with, along with some very um, informed experts on aviation law and airport land use planning. And uh, there is a path and argument, very good one in fact, why it should be deemed compatible. Um, that was all discussed on Tuesday with the council. The council adopted an intent to overrule the Airport Land Use Commission, which can be done according state law. And we have sent off the council's decision to the Airport Land Use Commission, Caltrans Division of Aeronautics. It's a thirty-day rebuttal period, um, and we expect to bring that all back to the council for a determination in September. Along with, if it's positive and we, you know, overrule it, then the, the council can move forward with the balance of the entitlements for the Oak Hill project. So, um, a lot of work um, goes into these things, um, because it's very technical. Uh, isn't something that the city has done before in my knowledge, um, and uh, so it's very important that it be done correctly and feel really good about all the work that's been done. Um, the SCG two seventeen, sorry?
No, I just was saying, it's a lot, a lot of sausage to.
It may be sausage, but there's no fat. All meat.
Okay.
Um, the SCG two seventeen project, of course, the planning commission approved that uh, way back in February. And um, we've been working very diligently, um, you know, we prefer to be deliberative than expeditious when uh, we want to make sure we got everything done right. Um, it did go to the council back on Tuesday and um, I think less than an hour before the council meeting, we received a um, multi-page letter from a law firm, um, and so um, we have our experts um, poring over it just to make sure um, confirm whether or not these are new issues that need to be addressed, or whether this is more a re- re- reiteration of what we've seen before. Um, so it was continued to the next council meeting um, in uh, August seventeen. So we'll pick it up again and see where we go with that. Um, some other things that, that are out there, we're kind of working on. Um, you might remember um, in the uh, January this year, planning commission approved the Fume cannabis business. Um, they've been moving forward with a variety of business decisions. Among them, they're going to be carving off their overall project to a couple of diff- at least, at least one other owner. Um, there is a process to do that through the cannabis ordinance. Um, I also understand that when you do that, they're even in their, their site plan. There is an eight-month rule, the city council approved, um, also at the end of last year that comes to play. So, it's like some of these things we don't do every day. We got to make sure that we're very deliberative. Um, but uh, we're kind of working on navigating how one accomplishes and accommodates what the applicant wants to do, because they are moving forward, uh, which is nice to see. In a complicated world. Um, Home to Suites, um, they are pretty much, um, they've received approval for their grading plans. You know, they're extending Main Street from where it ends at Antonina all the way over to that, to South Napa Junction Road, which is really a wonderful improvement. Um, uh, so we're really excited about that, apart from the hotel itself. Um, but they just uh, about a week or so ago submitted a request for some concessions on impact fee and utility costs and things. Um, this isn't a surprise. Um, they informed us of that probably a couple of years ago. We now have it. And so there's really two components to this. Um, our codes do allow already ex- um, fair share um, deductions on impact fees and then um, other areas of the code, you know, for revenue-producing uses and such. Um, so there are some areas in which they're entitled to a deduction and then we need to, to define that so we can more clearly define what might be the ask beyond that. Um, it would go to the city council. Uh, we think we might be able to get that to the council in September, but um, we'll, we'll see how it goes. That's just sort of, sort of off-the-sheet um, work effort here that we're, we're working on. So those are kind of my highlights I have for you. If you have any questions about other things going on in town, happy to answer. Oh, one other thing I do want to mention, because it just popped in my head, um, a couple of days ago. Um, Terry McGrath informed me that he signed a contract with an architect for the hotel in Watson Ranch by the ruins, so that's really exciting. So, uh, at some point, there'll be a design permit application for the planning commission, but these things are we have a lot of things that go on off this sheet as well, um, that are exciting and, and sometimes they take time.
Wow, right on your plate.
Well, it's, it's, it's exciting. We got a lot going on and, and there's a lot of people too. I know the coal fields a lot of questions from residents and businesses and we have our project review committee that includes public works and fire and building and, uh, you know, we have a lot of people that um, contribute to this process and, and I know Bill's working overtime, because just about everything goes through his office at some level, so I really appreciate everybody and all the hard work they do.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Stan. Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Quick question, any update on uh, the um, Watson Lane annexation?
Uh, that'll, the city attorney's the project manager for that.
Uh, yes, we're uh, pretty close to resubmital. Um, we have a, a owner uh, agreement almost to the percentage that would be uh, uh, two-thirds. And that's material then for how Alaska processes, so we anticipate it to be concluded within two weeks.
Oh, that quick?
Well, the submittal of the application, and then it has to be accompanied by a service plan which parallels uh, textual provisions that are in the uh, South County Municipal Service Review. Because the city's really the only, uh, uh, excuse me, the city is the logical provider of municipal services to that area. And I don't think I've mentioned it before, but it's geography. I mean, it, okay, its footprint configuration would also indicate that it's also an island. Although that might not seem uh, logical by appearance, which in itself then creates some presumptions under Alaska. Okay, it's also, if the owners do it, it's also exempt for now from review under CEQA. So that's why owner, well, that's not why, that's one reason why owner petition, petitions for uh, annexations are much more, are a much expedited method to uh, accomplish annexations. Obviously qualified by the facts, but that, that's the summary.
No, that's good news. That's good news, because that will uh, help the city in a lot of regards, uh, should it come to pass. So, good work.
Nothing green is easy.
It's hard to be green. Any commissioner items? Okay, Commissioner Altman, and then Commissioner Wong.
I'm gonna again bring up, because I had brought it up, uh, prior to um, July's uh, Meet Me in the Street event. Um, I'll bring it up again. There was talk about suggestion that if the city wants to do uh, outreach the city taking a table at the event, and now that the event proved to be such a uh, smash hit um, from all the feedback I've heard, um, I'm hoping that again, the city is up for doing something and um, you know, having a table there that uh, planning commissioners and staff or whatnot, um, and, and as I say this, I am uh, I believe I've got to double-check my calendar, but I believe I'm volunteering myself to uh, spend some time and, and uh, you know, there that evening. Um, it's not all that long, it's only two hours or so, I think, um, officially, so um, I'm hoping that the city will be up for doing something uh, uh, along those lines, because it would be really beneficial, I think. As part of the goal of educating the community as to what the heck we are and what planning does.
No, I agree with you. I, I, I think August is probably looking, looking better. Um, we've just had a whole right now, um, to make sure that we get done and done correctly. And so I think, you know, we're kind of getting them done, so uh, you know, I want to be able to put something together that's meaningful um, in a, in a public forum like that, so that we don't just seem like we're just hanging around. But I think August would be, would be definitely something that we, we could be able to do, so I'll, I'll send messages to the planning commission and see when we get some volunteers to come and help us with something. But I want to put something together that, that, that I think we'll all feel good about, that helps us move forward with some input that we can use.
Good, thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Wong, you want to say something?
Yes, I did, thank you. Um, so I know for people who are on Nextdoor, you're all, we always see posts about lost dogs or about the chickens that roam around, how they're at the library now, they're at Seven-Eleven, they're everywhere. You know, we see posts about rabbits showing up, stray rabbits, there's one here, there's one in my neighborhood, I've seen all these posts about kittens. I found these kittens, I found these kittens, and I bring that up because I found kittens in my yard too, right after the fireworks, they showed up. So, I know we're planning commission, not animal control, but what me, what makes me ask here is because we are a planning commission and we do look at developments and we do look at adding housing, which brings more people to our city. So Brent, I was curious, how does city funding for these types of services dealing with domestic animals, how is that funded through our development fees? Is there a specific place where that's included as part of the development fees, or how does it, or how does the need for more services tie to development? Maybe you can help me if you can understand my question.
Um, I think the question is, is there an impact fee to address um, impacts to animal services? And we don't have a fee for that. I can't tell you I know how they're funded, but I can follow up with that. Um, I would guess it's I'm only guessing, I'll follow up and get you an answer that's informed.
Thank you, and I liked how succinctly you ordered my question.
But it seems like it'd be covered under some kind of county impact fees, because that's a county service, right, but?
Well, the city pays into it though. We have a contract with the Shell. I remember seeing it at some presentation once, we pay them. But it seems like the more people we have, the more need for services we have, so why isn't there an impact fee? Or how does it get funded? I don't know.
It makes two of us, but I'll find it.
Well, thank you, Brent, for following up. I would be grateful for any, you know, information that you can, you know, help with this.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, um, Commissioner Golf, you have anything? No, Commissioner Laurie?
Um, just if we do the what, um, out in the street, I'm already volunteering on August fourth. So, if we decide to do it that day, I can switch um, my time and potentially do another one. I'd like to participate and be part of this table as opposed to be other table, um, for, for that meeting, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good to know, alright, okay. And um, I don't, I don't have any, anything except that it was, it was a, um, just to note that the, the groundbreaking at Watson Ranch was a really good event. I was able to check it out. I know uh, Commissioner Altman was there and Brent was there and um, it was good to see it moving forward. So, um, anyway, that's, that's all I have, so I guess I can call um, a meeting to adjournment. Without objection, alright, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A week or so.
Yeah.
Next week.